To order the regular meeting of the East Point City Council on Tuesday, April 16th at 7:00 PM, please rise for the invocation given by none other than Dan Zander today, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Emily Fodder, we thank you for this day, and we just wanted to be with us, and we pray for our council, for this council meeting. We just wanted to say that we hear and we do our business, let this council go smooth this evening, and so we can get this thing going and smooth. All I ask is things in my name and pray, amen, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Zander. Please call the roll.
Councilmember D'Monico?
Here.
Councilmember Lucido?
Here.
Councilmember Kleinfelt?
Here.
Councilmember Owens?
Here.
Mayor Pixley?
Here.
With that, we move to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve as stated?
Support.
Who moved and supported?
Monaco Owens.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so moved. Please call the roll.
Councilmember D'Monico?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
And with that, we'll move to the first hearing of the public. Does anyone wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard? Mr. Sage? Chief Sage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Nick Sage. I'm a deputy fire chief here in East Point. I want to let you know that the city of East Point, in cooperation with Roseville and St. Clair Shores, are participating in the My Prevention Smoke Detector Program with the state of Michigan. This program offers a free in-home safety inspection, an installation of up to six smoke detectors, and one carbon monoxide detector, completely free of charge. This program is especially meaningful in our community in response to several fire fatalities in 2018. The firefighters feel that one of the best way to honor those that were lost is to aggressively pursue an environment of awareness and positive change within our community. This program is funded through FEMA, and quite frankly, came to fruition as a sidebar discussion last month with a visit from the governor and state fire marshal, Kevin Sellmeyer. There's more information on this program in the city website, and along with the online signup form. I also tonight have paper copies of the forms here. Anybody would like a copy of that here. And as always, I welcome calls to my office with further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, first hearing of the public is closed. Move on to approval of the minutes, and we'll start with the regular meeting of March 26, 2019.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March 26, 2019.
Do we have support?
Support.
Move in support. Any addition or corrections? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico?
Yes.
Second item is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 2, 2019. Do we have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, uh, regular meeting minutes for April 2, 2019.
Do we have support?
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
And our last item is our, the minutes from the closed session from the meeting of April 2, 2019. Do we have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from April 2, 2019.
Support.
Move in support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Stay.
We have no scheduled hearings for tonight. We have a few items under unfinished business, and the first one is the approval of the fleet replacement program, which has been tabled numerous times. Do we have a motion, or did you have more questions?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to moving forward with this, but I think I would feel more comfortable approving it by department as, like, have it be more, like, specific when we make the approval than just, like, the cons... Like, because some, like, we might not all want to do every department, so I think if we voted on it by department would be more appropriate.
So there was a suggestion made at the last meeting that perhaps we do just the police department for one year, and see how that worked out, and then move on to other departments. Would that be satisfactory? Yeah.
I mean, I'm okay with that. I'm also okay with having the discussion, uh, discussion during budget. I'm not opposed to doing this. I do think the way it was presented was a little, I feel like there would need to be either a budget amendment or something to the funds that we've allocated for vehicle replacement.
Actually, Councilmember, due to the timing, we would not receive cars until after July 1, and therefore, no budget amendment is required, because we do not charge an account until the product is received per accounting rule. So this would be next fiscal year, and it's already in the budget for next fiscal year.
So in talking with Director of Public Safety, he said that probably we would not be receiving the cars until December, even if we signed on today.
So the funds would come out of the next fiscal budget, so maybe would be more appropriate to wait till after we approve the budget to vote on this?
Then, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Then, if we wait until June, then the cars won't arrive probably till February. Mr. Conaway's available. He can answer the technicalities about the timing, if council is willing.
Yeah, that's correct. So it's, uh, we can get vehicles one of two ways. So we can either order direct from the factory, which is going to be pretty much the only way to get police cruisers, and there's a longer lead time associated with that, or we can get some out of dealer stock, so, which means that they would be available more immediately or quicker. The way that we have the program slotted for your guys is to keep the cost to bare minimum, is factory ordering right away. So if we place the orders in June, or if we place the orders in May, which is primarily where we want to place them, we can slot them for delivery in whatever month that we need. But if we wait until June, and then we place orders later in July or August, then you're subject to a longer lead time, and I couldn't tell you for certainty when you would be receiving them, but I could tell you that before the end of this calendar year, if we were able to place the orders in May, you would take delivery of all of the units that we placed. So we would be able to get the police, the cruisers that they needed before the end, before December 31st.
But the, the budget meetings are the last day of this month and the first day of May, but the budget doesn't go into effect until July 1?
That's correct, yeah. So we wouldn't slot anything for delivery before July 1. You guys would know the price of everything before it delivered, but you guys would not, there wouldn't be any charges occurring until the vehicle's actually delivered.
Right. So I, I had an additional question for you?
Yes.
If, um, because that, we know that we need to replace that gas tank.
Yes.
So if we were to sign on for just four cars, I, I don't know what the rest of the council says, and that's going to be determined in the budget.
Sure.
But if we were to sign on for an unidentified number of cars, we could still sign on for the gas lease, correct?
You are 100% correct, yes.
Then that would cover all of our cars?
Yeah, that could go on, that can go on tomorrow, if you would like it to.
All right. Cardi, you had a lot of questions. Were they all answered?
Oh, I think I, I just have two now, after being able to review all the information Mr. Saboda sent about a week ago. The, the first one is, I just want to double check I'm understanding this correctly. The, so I'm just referring to the, the total here. You sent us over 10 years, just over $2 million in, this is purchases of vehicles and maintenance.
Uh, no, that's only maintenance. Purchases is the...
1.6 million?
Page before that total, I'm sorry, two pages before, that total 1.675. That was the capital asset activity report. Beginning cost is the column.
Okay. So then, we've spent 3.6 million?
For purchase and maintenance combined, correct.
And the total maintenance cost was?
Uh, $2,545,78.20 across five different functions.
So we, we spent more on maintenance than buying all of the vehicles? Okay.
We're hoping to change that.
So if, if we're going to discuss it further in the budget meetings, then would somebody want to table this issue until the budget meeting?
Uh, I think that's appropriate. I, I just think that this is more appropriately addressed at that time, because that's when we talk about our capital assets and what our plans going to be. That said, to make sure I understand correctly, you're not going to order anything until the contract's signed, correct?
Yeah, we can't, we can't put any vehicles on order for you guys until it's signed. That's correct.
So I think we, we could talk about it at budget. I think what Ms. Lucido said's a good idea, going by department to, um, because I'd like to have from department heads their recommendation or to talk about their needs. I'm not sure how Joseph plans to present the budget this year, but normally we have department heads come and speak about each individual department. And that said, I, I think at that time, we don't have to necessarily wait to vote on agreement until the budget goes into effect, but as soon as we set the budget and we're like, okay, the money's there for this program, then we can get going.
So I mean, my recommendation would probably be the May 7 meeting to have this back on the agenda after we have our budget discussion at the end of the month.
Okay. So you, do you want to table it then to the May 7 meeting? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'll make motion to table to the May 7.
All right. Can I ask one more question before we, before we do that? How, and I just want to make sure I understand the, um, the last email that I just sent about how long we have each vehicle. You were saying four year for, four years for patrol cars and...
Five years for, for everything else.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Mm-hmm. And that's because we have warranties expiring. So the idea is you get rid of the car as the warranty expires, so you don't incur those costs, because we're anticipating under warranty an average of about $300 per year for maintenance costs. And once the warranty expires, then that number shoots up significantly.
So I guess my, the, the question I'm thinking, this might be for you too then, Steve?
Yes.
And Mr. Saboda, if, for example, I'm just thinking, if I buy a car, and I keep it for 10 years, I guess it doesn't really matter at this point if you pay for it upfront or do a loan for five years. That last five years, if you do a five-year loan, you're not paying a payment, or if you buy it upfront, you know, you don't have a car payment for 10 years. The maintenance will go up a little bit at the end, at least, knock on wood, so far, pretty good with my own vehicle. Um, some of the vehicles we don't use as much, it seems like there's probably, because the ma, maintenance, I'm assuming, is skewed, it's not evenly spread out throughout all the vehicles. If we kept some, like, 10 years or something instead of five, it seems like we'd save money, because the depreciation's like real quick at the beginning, I feel with most cars, it seems like, and then it kind of, you know, plateaus for the next five, because we'd be selling it every time after it's lost, like, a huge amount of depreciation.
Correct, yeah.
How does that make sense, then, if we're doing all cars in five years? It seems like we'd spend more in the long term.
Sure, great question. Uh, it's a two-part answer. One, there is no set it and forget it, so we can put something on a five-year term, and you guys could keep it for 10 years if you want. Again, you guys have all rights of ownership with this style of lease, so we can absolutely do that.
Okay.
What we find best practice is, and doing this every single day as a profession, you guys buy at such a low price that you don't hit a depreciation curve like you do with your car, if you were to go to Mike Reels down the street, or Morales, or Genesis, as it's called now. Because you bought at a 25% lower price than a MSRP through the state bid or through your negotiated source well deal, your depreciation isn't anything in your first 12 months. In fact, your depreciation, you actually can sell it for more after 12 months of use than you bought it for in the first place. Because you have such a great price, and because you guys don't drive it anywhere, after five years, not only does your warranty expire, but your resale value drastically drops, because now you're reselling a vehicle that's five years old at 50,000 miles, that no longer has warranty. So instead of being able to, in a pickup truck, maybe capture $19,000 in a resale number when you originally leased it 24 or five years ago, now if you keep it for another year, yeah, you're right, you don't have a payment on it, but you actually cost the city more money by keeping it in loss and resale than you would have if you replaced it and rolled your equity into a new unit. So that's the type of analysis that we bring to you guys every single year, and it's not going to be throwing darts at a board blindly for you. We're going to be presenting you guys fleet management solutions and replacements based on your actual data, and based on data that we're going to forecast for the next 12 months. So it won't be, how much is it going to keep, cost to keep, I don't know, how much maintenance are we going to do, I don't really know. We do know, and we're going to be able to tell you, and that's what your recommendation is going to be based off of. So, right now, it's a little bit of a guessing game, because you're tracking, like any city that we haven't partnered with just yet, isn't the best. It's not up to par, but you guys aren't in the vehicle game. We are, right? You're in the governing game. So you govern, and we manage vehicles. That's why it's such a great fit.
I, I thought that's why discussion by department made sense, because not every per, not...
Yeah.
Police cars need to be replaced much more often than other vehicles, so.
I agree.
Support.
Okay. So we have a motion, and we have support.
Yes.
Please call the roll, unless you have another question. Ms. Owens, you're awful quiet tonight.
Oh, me and him had a long discussion. I actually had a meeting with him, and we talked about all this one-on-one. So when I, when I'm quiet, I mean, I already did my research.
Yeah, we sat down and discussed numbers and talked throughout the program to work for each department.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes. Our next item is the approval of the use agreement for the Patriot Building and the mural on the outside wall of the Patriot Building. Can we get a motion to put this on the table for discussion?
Ms. Van Herren's not here, but Ms. Dybald is.
Who is?
Dybald.
Oh.
Remember her?
I just didn't hear you.
All right, and then, and then, Mr. Kleinfelt is the chairman of the group, so maybe you've discussed this again since the last council meeting?
Um, there was some discussion on it, but really just letting the Arts Commission just keeping up to date with what our discussions had been. For the purposes of, I am going to talk about some changes I think might be necessary, but to get it on the table, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for the Patriot Building, use agreement.
Support.
All right. Please bring up your items.
Um, the first thing that I wanted to look at was limiting groups to one program per month. I thought it would be wise to limit nonprofit groups to one booking at a time, and have an exception for commissions that they can set out dates for the entire year. Because I, I just don't want any groups to lock up use of that building and end up excluding other groups. I want the...
Excluding the commissions or the city's meetings?
Yeah.
Okay, I would agree. Everybody?
No fee, of course, right? No fee?
Uh, for what?
For the use, for nonprofits.
We, by law, cannot make donations to a nonprofit, so there has to be a fee of some sort.
Have you said a fee?
A fee is established by council after the policy.
Uh, I think what we would do is probably amend our fee schedule and add it on to that. Uh, and I don't think...
There is no discussion of it in this policy?
Yeah, I don't think there's been any, like, estimates or anything, so I don't think we have any information to go off of what to do with that.
So, Mr. Saboda, I don't agree, though, that there has to be a fee. I don't believe it's a donation. I mean, the building's going to exist one way or another anyway.
What the city is doing is it's expending public funds for non-public purpose, which is viewed as a donation, contribution to support a nonprofit.
Don't we do that with the library? We, we let them use the, the sort, the resource room for free.
During business hours?
Yes, we do.
During business hours, we have, I guess you can say, a different standard, because that's a public building that's open to the public, whereas this is a building that isn't open to the public, and we are opening up to the, for a nonprofit use at a specific time. So when you've got a public building that's open at the time, person coming in can use it, because there's no additional cost.
Well, so if we just somehow get the nonprofit to be able to walk in themselves, since it's not, you know, it's not city hall, it's just a building of one room, I guess like we did over the weekend, except we'll have to figure out the alarm, because...
Yeah, but you were a beautification commission.
You're a beautification commission, so...
So you're a city affiliate.
Right, but nobody from the city was there getting paid or anything. You know, everybody was volunteers there. It didn't cost the city any money for us to use the building.
But the beautification commission was totally responsible for it. So if you give a nonprofit group, you, you're going to have to have some kind of a, a fee for the cleaning and the opening, because you can't give a nonprofit group the key to get in and out. So you're going to have to assign an individual for that responsibility.
Yeah, I, I think, I'm suspecting whatever the fee will be, will be quite low, and perhaps during the summer months when the building is open, and really they're just reserving the time to be able to be in there, maybe during those times, we could not assess a fee.
I guess that's what I was thinking. We're already open, because people use those facilities to use the bathrooms, it's already open, so why would we charge them, like you were just saying, to use the facility?
For the larger room. Restroom facilities are one thing, but use of the one room is, would be something completely different.
So that would not...
Because you need to control the numbers of people that would be using it. Was there anything else in this particular policy?
I don't think that, when, when it comes time to decide on the fee, that's obviously going to be a later discussion, but I don't think the city's trying to make money, I don't think the city's going to try to make money off of it. It's just going to be the cost to basically make sure someone goes there, unlocks it, locks it up after the fact.
Right.
So it'd be minimal.
Well, and you have tables and chairs and other things, too, that if they're damaged.
Right.
So you really do have to have some type of an agreement if you're going to have nonprofit groups use it in addition.
What agreement are you talking about? I think that, I think, man, I was thinking of an agreement as where as if a cleanup fee, like any other place, a rental hall you would use, if you didn't clean up, then we would charge them.
That's something else that would be brought up at a future meeting when the fees are set. It would be called a cleanup deposit, a refundable cleanup deposit, so you have your fee to cover the costs for opening, closing, minor cleanup, if you will, and then if the place is a mess, that's when the cleaning deposit gets charged. I have worked in a community that has rented buildings, and that's the same procedure, that you had your fee, and then you had your cleanup deposit as well.
And, and I figured for even, for even getting in the building, though, I think that, I mean, it's 2019, I think we can figure out how to get someone into the building and out without one city employee going and leaving.
Well, you can't...
How do you get into the dog park? Nobody goes and opens the dog park for someone.
No, but they have fobs, that you have to get a fob in order to go in and out.
And that they pay for. They pay for the fobs. So I think it's important to make sure that building is secured when whoever leaves. I don't think trusting the, the public, you know, a nonprofit even, to like, make sure our building is secured when they leave should be the, you know, I don't know if we should trust them. I think we should have someone go there to make sure it's securely...
There's got to be. I think there's a way to turn on and off, right? Turn it on and off for the time that they use the building.
And I really don't think, and I...
I think we could figure this out.
We don't have anything in this policy, but I don't think that we should be allowing the keys to get in and out to any, just anybody, even if it's just a member of the commission. I think it should be a city responsibility of some person. Some, somebody has to have the commission, has to have the responsibility of one key to open and close the building.
I agree with that. However, I do think commission members, I don't have a problem with them, because they're appointed by us and...
They're covered under our insurance.
Yeah. So the second...
So every commission member?
Oh, I don't think every member. I think we've just been...
Every commission member is covered under insurance.
I understand that, but if you're going to allow various commissions to be utilizing, and are you going to allow any commission, any commissioner that was appointed, or just one commission?
Who, there would be one person responsible for, if we're going to be giving a key, there would be one person responsible for that key. If we're going to be staffing, lack of a better term, then whoever that staffing person is going to be, is going to be responsible for opening, opening and closing.
So right now, who's responsible for opening the bathrooms? We're, right?
Uh, we, we have a, we have a contractor that's responsible.
So why we can't use that contractor to open it up when we have certain, you know, events there? Since we're already paying them to open the door, why should we pay somebody else to open the door? We paying somebody else to do already?
That's my assumption, is that the contractor will be used for that purpose. Because they're the ones that are responsible for cleaning the facility as well.
That's what I just guessed. I'm trying to wonder why we're going back and forth, who gets the fob when we have someone that opens it and closes the door for us already that we pay?
Well, I think the issue comes in, in, like, winter months, when there isn't someone there that goes and open it, opens that.
Or even during the day, during the week, in the summer, because I believe it's only open in the evenings.
On the weekend, is there?
Uh, during the week.
If you, if you had a...
Weekends, I think it's open.
If you had a fob or a lock key, you know, like the realtors use with a specific code, it would make it easy for commissioners to get in and out, and you can change that code on a monthly basis or a bimonthly basis or something to maintain some security of it. But I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to give, because it's very difficult to say that you're only going to give the key to the arts commissioners when beautification commission also used it. So how many commissioners are going to have the key to get in and out?
Uh, Madam Mayor, now that I'm remembering what we have written here, we're actually not addressing how the facility's going to be open and how it's going to be closed in the policy.
I know we're not, but I think that there has to be something in the policy about opening and closing the facility.
Okay, because I was going to say that administration can make that determination once the policy's implemented.
All right. If you want to do that, that's fine.
I think it would be easier then. Unless council wants to limit, you have that authority for the policy, but being that the policy's silent, then we in administration would identify the best means and methods to grant the access and protect the city.
So are you going to put that in here somewhere?
Uh, I wasn't going to put that in there. It would just be an operational method, but if council wants, we could put it in.
Um, I'm going to suggest adding an item number 14 under rules of use. Users must comply with the policies and procedures developed by administration.
And then would you like number 15 to be limit nonprofits to one booking at a time?
Um...
Because you had mentioned that earlier.
Hold on. Sorry, actually, I'm going to add at the end of that, policies and procedures developed by administration for opening, closing, and securing the building.
All of council agree with that?
Yes.
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 Okay, and then number 15?
Well, that should probably go in the previous section if we're talking about in the scheduling section.
Application scheduling?
Yeah. I wanted to go back to, because what I spoke about before was number three, in changing that language to read.
Nonprofits.
Aside from city commissions, groups... Aside from city commissions, groups may only make reservation for one date at a time.
All of council agree with it?
Yeah, I agree with that. One other thing...
Who are they gonna make reservations with that's gonna go through your administration and who?
Right now, DPW is going to be responsible for the administration of the, I'm gonna call it, the contract.
DPW, but they're not over our contractors, right?
Yes, they are.
They're, DPW is over parks contracts?
Theoretically, they are. Presently, Mr. Marucci's been handling the parks contractor because we didn't have a DPW director. But DPW is responsible for the administration, for the renting of the, use of the facility.
All right, aside from city commissioners, groups may only... Nonprofit groups, just groups may only reserve one date per month?
I just said one date at a time.
So strike groups are limited to one program per month, or leave that language in?
I don't think it has to be once a month. It's just one date at a time. I think that's...
We're striking?
Yeah.
And applications shall be made at least one month in advance and no more than one year prior to a scheduled meeting. Want to continue that?
I think that's fine.
And applications should be made to the Department of Public Works. And that's up above, the DPW authorizes use of the Patriot Building and the director maintains the schedule. That's in paragraph two. Is that okay?
Yes.
Say that again.
Up above, under application scheduling, number two. All those who wish to use the Patriot Building must complete a standard application form, which will be attached to policy statement. Public Works authorizes use of the Patriot Building and the director maintains the schedule.
The other question that I had was actually near the beginning, priority given to locally organized educational, cultural, civic, or professional nonprofit organizations. Would I be correct to read that to mean that it has to be officially organized groups?
For second priority, yes. I've also been in a community where, actually was at a council meeting, where groups were given a separate place in the agenda after public to address the council. And we actually had people creating groups just so that they could address the council a second or a third time during the meeting.
Well, that was my concern, if I just made a group of my friends and called us something to be able to use the facility.
So in some locales, they say that if you want to rent a place such as this, that at least one member needs to be a resident. I think we have that policy established for use of the tennis courts and things like that, that are other properties within the city.
I think this had language that they had to have either based in East Point or had membership of East Point residents somewhere in it.
Yes, that's actually the second line in that second paragraph where it reads second priority. Locally organized is defined as an East Point-based organization or one with significant East Point membership.
I, can I have, talk about one more thing? The, under publicity, I'd like to shift those three down and add on number one. That just reads, city commissions are exempt from this section. Because if a commission's doing an event, the city should feel free to advertise it.
Yes.
You wanna say that again, please?
Adding number one, city commissions are exempt from this section. And that was all I had.
I had one for prohibited uses and activities. Number three, I don't think we can ban, so I know this has been, this was an issue at the library, but I don't think we can ban religious groups or political meetings as long as it's equally available for either any religious group or any political group.
I think you have to.
Have to what?
Ban partisan, partisan political meetings as well as religious meetings.
Well, so we broke this rule then in 2014 or 15 when a S M O R S A event was held at the fire station. I mean, the S M O R S A ballot committee in favor of it had an event there. If there was a committee against, they could have used the fire station also. This is even in the MERTS, what the Michigan elections, whatever it stands for. Thing here that, you know, the use of a publicly owned facility leased or bought, or owned on behalf of a public body of any candidate or committee has equal opportunity to use the facility. So that would cover political groups, and then the Supreme Court has ruled that a religious group can meet at a public school. So I'd assume that...
Provided they pay, provided they pay for rent.
And as long as, I was assuming all these were gonna be public, too, so if you have a meeting, the public could just pop in. We were doing this not for private, private events, right?
I totally disagree. I don't think that you should be allowing religious meetings or partisan political events.
I think, I think as long as, like you just mentioned, the equal use rule, if you ban all partisan activities there, you can do it. You just can't allow some and not others.
That's correct.
That said, I don't think necessarily something that was informational, for example, if Mr. Bueno wanted to do an update on something going on in Lansing, but it wasn't a campaign activity, it might be allowable. I'm not entirely sure on that, but I think...
I think S M O R S A was more, it was providing the information as opposed to campaign. But I am definitely against anything using taxpayer-funded property for political campaigning. If it was an elected person that wanted to come forward and provide information, like, say, Andy Levin wanted to come down and tell us what was happening in Washington, and he wanted a location to meet with residents, that's different. He's our elected congressperson. But if it's somebody that's campaigning, I find it very difficult to accept that taxpayer funding should be used for that purpose.
And I will say, I would agree that any campaigning or campaign activities would certainly have to be paid for. We would not be allowed to give a facility to anyone for free for that. Rich, do you have any input as to religious meetings?
As you indicated, the city can't get into the business of differentiating between which are religious organizations and which are going to be allowed and which are not gonna be allowed. So you're either going to allow it for all or not allow it for all.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if we can put, like, religious meetings on here because there are some nonprofit organizations that are religious-based. So, I mean, are we gonna ban them, like Habitat for Humanity, if they wanted to have a meeting there?
Not religious, that's a nonprofit.
That's a nonprofit group.
But it's...
It's still religious-based.
I mean, where do you, yeah, where do you draw the line then?
Yeah.
I don't know. I've been to an awful lot of Habitat for Humanity and never once was religion ever mentioned.
I mean, it's Christian-based, for sure, yeah.
I think the primary purpose of Habitat for Humanity, though, is actually building homes for people that are disadvantaged as opposed to espousing any particular doctrine or theology.
Right. Nonprofits have to have a special registration through the state of Michigan, so that's how we'd make that determination. That's how they're registered, with the state as a certified nonprofit, and then also with the federal government, for that matter.
Yeah, I don't think we have to get into splicing that. Laura does it for us, so we can just go by what they, what they assign a group. Carter, you mentioned...
Well, it actually does say the Patriot Building cannot be used for any of the following purposes.
Right, that's what I was talking about.
And I think, I think it was Mr. DeMonico, you said you imagine this as only public meetings. Is that something? We don't have it in there.
No. Yeah.
But I think that is what we were sort of imagining, is it being used for a public purpose, not for meetings closed off to the public. So if you, if council would like, I'd be happy to add that as a term of use.
Whatever you think, because I was thinking, like, if, yeah, if the Lions or Rotary or Kiwanis or something, they want more members anyway. I imagine it'd be open to the public. I think all their current meetings are open to the public. So that's, and then, you know, we're not shutting down the Patriot Building just for...
But those are, those are fraternal organizations, so maybe you can include those as, as you have with nonprofit groups. So maybe you could put nonprofit or fraternal organizations as being able to be using it.
I do believe that the fraternals are organized as nonprofits with the state of Michigan, so they're already. For example, let's say, based on the policy that's written here, if the Lions Club wanted to have a private meeting at the Patriot Building because they want to elect their members, they can do that under the policy that is before council right now. If council wants to put in a requirement that it be open to the public, and the Lions Club wants to exclude non-members from their election meeting, they could not use the Patriot Building, then.
Correct.
If Councilman DeMonico's...
I don't think it needs to be open to the public, but that's...
We can just leave it out, and if it's ever an issue, we can amend the policy.
I mean, I think that while that building's open for that meeting, they can, they have the right to close those doors. Those bathrooms, obviously, would be open to the public then at that time, but...
I was looking at the prohibited uses and activities. It says fundraising activities except for city commissions. I was thinking, also, I know the library has a lot of fundraisers, book sales and things like that. I think we should do except for city commissions and city, city events. Like if it's for the library, that's for the library. That's for the city, yeah, for the friends or something like that. And I know you had, did a pasta, spaghetti pasta event or something for, that was for what?
Memorial Day parade, yeah.
Yeah, or something like that. We should, we should limit it to city commissions and city functions only, if we're gonna do it for that.
Fundraising activities except for city commissions and city-sponsored events?
Yeah.
Different from city authorized events, because the Memorial Day Parade is not a city-sponsored event, it's a city-authorized event.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, so what would, we would just have to say we're sponsoring it or something, then?
Well, saying we're sponsoring it and doing it should really be one and the same.
Well, because we're, I mean, for the friends or the Memorial Day Parade, like you just said, we're not...
Under the policy, right. Under the policy, they would not be permitted to use the Patriot Building for a fundraising event. If the city, and this is actually something that is permitted by state law, if the city were to actually sponsor the Memorial Day Parade and cover all the costs, which we are allowed to do under the law, then we could hold a fundraiser there under this policy, as written. With that...
So where did you want to put that?
Number four?
That was number four.
Number four says cannot be used for the following purposes.
Yeah.
Excuse me, number four, number four.
I know, but it's under, the Patriot Building cannot be used.
Except for.
Except for, and we're saying except for.
City commissions and city-sponsored events.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Would council appreciate if all of these changes were properly drafted, reviewed once again by the attorney for one final check, and then presented to council at the next meeting? So that you have a clean document that you could look at and vote on?
I don't, I'm, we've made so few changes to this. I don't have a problem with it.
I can do it tonight or next meeting. It doesn't matter.
I can do it tonight.
Will you have, will you have the fees and stuff in there?
All right, so we have a, we have a motion and support.
No, that would, that would come separately. I'm gonna...
Make another motion with the changes.
Amend my motion to approve with all the changes we've discussed.
And we have support?
Support.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens? Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
All right, our next item is the marijuana legislation with the planning commission recommendations.
Madam? If you're making a motion, go ahead.
No, I'm not gonna make a motion.
Okay. Madam Mayor, the Planning Commission has not yet made a recommendation. So the recommendation that I am making is to postpone the issue until such time that the Planning Commission has finalized the review and makes a recommendation. The reason it appeared on the agenda today is council previously ordered that it appear on the agenda today. So since we don't have any action from the Planning Commission, and council cannot amend a zoning ordinance without a Planning Commission recommendation, and we don't know when that's coming, my recommendation is to postpone this until such time that that recommendation comes forward.
Madam Mayor, I was proposing to schedule a special meeting with the Planning Commission to finish the ordinance together.
Do you want to do that after their next meeting? Because it sounded like they had a lot of discussion yet to go forward.
Yeah, but I think that at this time, we might be able to propose some dates so I can have them available at their next meeting, which is May 2nd.
Did you want to do a meeting, a joint meeting on May 2nd?
No, I'm saying their next meeting is May 2nd, so following that, I would, if we could, the five of us could come up with some dates that we could propose, so...
So would you like to make that now, some planning suggestions for a joint meeting?
What about, like, May 9th?
On a Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
I can't come to them. I mean, I have something on that night, but...
I'm sorry. You have something that you said?
I don't have my schedule. You can look on me. That's why I can't. What if?
It's fine with me.
Or...
You can do it on May 9th.
Well, I was thinking maybe we should give them a couple of dates, just to...
I'd rather go till June and let them come up with something in May and then have a joint meeting in June.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because we do have a meeting on May 2nd, so... Maybe May 9th or May 14th.
I will be unavailable on the 14th.
The 16th?
And the 16th. Now, the, I, I'm not sure if this, if we would do this as a joint meeting or just schedule a workshop for ourselves to discuss, try to draft an ordinance and invite the Planning Commission. And because Mr. Spoh is right, there, it needs to go through them. So what we might end up doing is drafting an ordinance, sending it over, and saying, what's your recommendation on this?
So what is the status with, so is the Planning Commission not going to propose a...
I think their plans are to eventually propose something. I just think they're having a really hard time working out the details, so I just thought this might help them move the process along.
I think if we establish a date on the Thursday, after your availability, is okay on that day?
On the 9th, yes.
At the last meeting, the Planning Commission was discussing where, number one, what types of facilities to allow. And they had a discussion as to which ones they didn't feel were appropriate, period. And so they narrowed down the types of facilities, and then the second part of that discussion was locations in the city. Which zoning district would be appropriate for a particular type of facility? And they were looking at the, the area along Nine Mile Road between Kelly and I-94 in that area. But what the city planner was going to do was going to prepare essentially an overlay showing the distances from where proposed sites would be and residential areas, churches, schools and that kind of thing with a distance measurement in there. So the Planning Commission could have an opportunity to review that. So Ms. Hall plans on providing that at the, at the May Planning Commission meeting. So that's where they're at right now.
I think I'd maybe like to plan later in May in case, um-
Well, I mean, and that's fine. We can plan later in May. I just don't think it's gonna make a difference because they're, they're gonna have a meeting May 2nd. Their next one won't be until June, so.
Mr. Saboda, I was gonna suggest to the council, I know that the council has not formally made a decision whether to opt in or opt out with regard to recreational marijuana. I know the deadline to do so is not gonna be until December of this year. It's something that the council should consider because that deadline will, will get here fairly quickly.
And if I may, Mr. Albright, I think I read in the paper, it was either yesterday or today, that Laura's working on preparing emergency rules that may be available as soon as June, so.
I don't know what those say, but that is true.
And those Laura rules are gonna change a lot of things about the current medical marijuana, because they're going to adjust related to caretakers and gifting and so forth. So it might be beneficial to have the Planning Commission come out with it and then by that time, we should get some of the newer Laura reg, regs, and then that would be, um-
A lot of the communities have opted out. That doesn't necessarily-
Two hundred and nine communities.
Doesn't necessarily show that it's taking a position of being anti-recreational marijuana. It's just taking that step as a precaution to allow at a future date, because the council or the city can always opt back.
I think that you can always zap, back in, but the, all those communities that for the most part are opting out until they get those regulations a little bit more clarified.
That's correct.
So. I, I'd like to have a joint meeting maybe in June after the Planning Commission has it for one more month and see. We can do a joint meeting at that time, because by that time, I think, I hope Jeff is shaking his head yes and no. But I think by that time, we should have the zones and, and perhaps the numbers that they are recommending.
My biggest concern with June is I know that a lot of people start going on vacations in June, and I think with there being seven members on the commission, it's gonna be a lot harder to plan a date. That's why I would propose May over June.
So you said May 9th? I think Mike said he can come and Cardi-
Well, May 9th or the, well, Mike's unavailable the second week, second full week of May. So maybe give him a date of May-
You can put me down.
Twenty-second?
I'm out of town. That's the day my daughter graduates, granddaughter.
If you wanna put me down, Sarah, for May 9th, I can come. That's four of us here. So that's the idea.
How about the, if it, the last, the last week in May is the first day-
May 30th?
Um, no, May 20, 27th or May 30th.
The 27th is Memorial Day.
Right, but the next day is a Tuesday. Correct, is the 28th.
So give him May 9th, May 28th and May 30th. Would that work?
I would prefer the 28th and the 30th.
I would rather try to give him three days.
I can do the, I'll try the 9th. Any changes, I'll let you know.
Well, I'll, I'll push for the 28th or the 30th then.
I'm trying to just start during the holidays.
All right, so, um, we don't have to have a motion to that effect.
However, Madam Mayor, this was an order of council to place it on the agenda, so I think it would be proper for council to do something with this so that the record reflects that council did act on a previous order.
Somebody wanna make a motion, please?
Well, we can probably table this to the first meeting in June after we have that meeting.
However you want to do it. I, I mean, I also think we could just let it die until one of us requests it to be put back on the agenda.
That's fine, too.
So we still need to get a motion of some kind to get it off the table at this time? Correct? Because we had ordered it to be on-
That's the technicality that I see.
So I think that maybe we could just do something stating that we're looking for dates to establish a joint meeting.
All right, um. Can I motion to table this indefinitely? I mean, I, I think technically that might not be, all right. I'll motion to table this topic indefinitely.
Support.
Move support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Owens?
Yeah.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amoneco?
Yes.
All right, well, let's move on to reports from administration. Start with our city manager, Mr. Saboda.
Evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Monday marked my six-month anniversary with the city. My computer was kind enough to remind me of my anniversary by posting our quarterly reminder, "Your password has expired." Although my password may have expired, my passion for continuing to help East Point move forward in the right direction has not. Three months ago, I did identify some major financial challenges and council has taken steps to address those, especially in regards to the OPEB liability and the pension liability with the agreement with five of the six employee unions on OPEB and the additional $2 million contribution to the pension fund that we made before December 31st. And believe me, that really had a significant impact. Moving forward, the balanced budget that I presented to council last meeting took our projected operating deficit at the end of fiscal year 2023 from a negative $1.8 million to a negative $275,000. And this was done by continuing the budget-cutting moves implemented by my predecessor, Mr. Cotton. And we're not quite where we need to be, but I'm confident that over the next few years, we will identify some additional efficiencies so that we can be on a flat financial footing at least, at a minimum. We have been having some challenges in terms of personnel. For years, we've been operating without an adequate succession plan, not just for department heads, but also for employees who are anticipating retirements. So working with Director Rohib, we have developed a succession plan at least for patrol officers who are planning to retire, and that is on the agenda this evening. Also, finally, for the first time in years, we have a fully-staffed fire department, and I know Deputy Chief Sage is happy about that. And for the first time in six years, we have a new DPW director who has already gotten off the, uh, gotten the ball rolling on several ideas in terms of long-term capital planning. And with his hiring and that of the IT firm, we're, we're now able to have the parts that we need in place to truly begin to develop a very good, thorough capital asset program, which we'll be presenting to council relatively soon. Also, in terms of long-term planning, since the budget was completed, I have now started investigating the various options to present to this honorable body to address the long-term OPEB and pension liabilities. There are several options out there and I feel council needs to be made aware of all of those. And also, I am hopefully going to have a first meeting next week with police, fire and the district court to review the needs assessment for the new public safety complex. Once we have a needs assessment, then we'll be able to identify the feasibility of moving forward in terms of what potential cost would be for a project like that, locations, et cetera. I have been doing my best to keep the public informed. This week, we posted a copy of the city's four infrastructure reports on the DPW homepage that talks about our stormwater, sanitary system, water system and our roads. So now the public knows where we are and what the plans are going forward, at least in theory. If funding is available, we will be able to implement those plans. By the end of June, we will have online permit applications and online inspection scheduling for our building department. Our inspectors will have computers with them in the field to help facilitate their jobs. And we will also have another option for residents to report their concerns to the city through an online reporting tool. So we're beginning to move in a more technologically savvy world. I know we need to revise our webpage a little bit, but that's for the budget. We'll be discussing that in a couple of weeks. And I do wish to thank council, the department heads and the staff for their support as we continue to deliver the information and services necessary to keep East Point the family-friendly city. And now for the weekly reminders. City Hall and DPW will be closed Friday in observance of Good Friday and a blessed Easter to all who observe. The zoning board of appeals meeting for Thursday has been canceled due to lack of agenda items. The beautification commission meets Thursday, April 25th at 7:00 at the Patriot Building. The city council will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, April 30th at 6:00 to review the proposed budget. And as previously discussed, the Planning Commission will meet Thursday, May the 2nd at 6:00 PM, and I do believe that the proposed marijuana regulation ordinance will be a topic on the agenda. And Deputy Chief Sage took a good paragraph out of my report. However, I would like to indicate that if anyone is interested and does not have computer access to the, uh, file an application for the smoke detectors and the carbon monoxide detector, they can call the fire department. That number is 586-445-5055. And with that, if council has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Anyone?
Um, yeah, I had a question, uh, related to the memorial building. I understand there was an estimate it wouldn't be done until September after meeting with the architect, and I was curious as to why that would be.
Uh, they are in the process of preparing the plans, but Mr. Altimus has more details and I'd like to defer to him on that, if I could.
Well, we have an estimate now on, that we have provided in the past. We're right now moving on as council has ordered on design, so we can have options available to go forward. Right, they actually are pushing as fast as they can and hope to have that before July or at least a preliminary design done. We had never started any design work on this, cause it was never given to us to move forward with it. It was always a discussion, but that is what we discussed. We had a, about an hour and a half meeting out at the site and walked through it, so they are pushing.
That was kind of my concern, because I, I don't think we were, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think council was looking for design to be implemented at this stage, things like the roof, the windows, the doors. We're not gonna move those around.
No.
So I, I would like to get those-
There still has to be specs written and still has to be drawings drawn, and that's what we're gonna work on. We understand that point and we are moving forward with that. We also have the concession stand that is a complete gut and rebuild, so that'll, that has to be, in architect terms, has to be designed and laid out so we can get the bid documents going. Obviously, we understand the timeframe that you wish to have that completed on, and we are pushing that ahead as fast as we can.
Are you expecting council to weigh in on, on that design then?
That is up to you, but I was gonna move forward based on my direction from you folks is just get it ready, design and bid.
I, I'd like to see that be a priority, because I, I think things like the roof and, firms should be able to put that together quite quickly and get it posted.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think pushing them to get this done and out before July is not a big push on their, on their end.
I think they, they pretty much know from the, the meetings that the parks commission has had, what needs to go forward. I think they're moving along in the right direction.
We've, we've already, they've already been out measuring the building and already doing their, their site work on that. So we hope to, again, push that forward as quickly as possible, cause I know the timing on it.
I'm sure it's gonna be brought to council so we can see their designs.
I mean, personally, I, I'm-
It's just a concession stand, really. The, I mean, the roof and the gutters.
Unless you indicated you wanted to see it first, I was just gonna move directly into bidding.
I would like to try to get it done as soon as possible.
That is my goal.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Altimus. Do I see a disagreement or?
I didn't.
No, I, I, my concern was the delay. I, I think-
Okay.
This needs to move quickly.
Your direction to me was design, spec and bid, so that's what I'm moving forward on.
This has just been, I think this is a fine example of what was in our five-year capital improvement plan that we don't have and it's not being utilized, and we need to see that five-year capital improvement plan integrated with whatever the new DPW director has come up with, because we were very, very firm and had that all set. So I'm not sure why we have not voted on that or looked at that again since God only knows when. But that was part of it and we know, so we're moving on it as fast as possible. All right, anything else for city manager? Let's move on to the-
Oh, I have one more real quick thing.
All right.
I'd like administration maybe to speak with our public safety director about looking at issuing tickets for littering. We had the cleanup on Eight Mile and it was pretty bad. And I, I think I, at least I would like to see actual tickets coming in and ticketing businesses who aren't cleaning up their property, and that's all.
Good luck. You could go down there and clean that street every eight hours.
And, and I can say, Madam Mayor and council, that our building department with the code enforcement is pretty aggressive in terms of catching especially businesses that have overflowing dumpsters. I've actually taken a couple calls myself on those, so they're, they're addressing them as soon as they can see them.
There's no dumpsters down there. Where were you talking about?
Yeah, I, I meant other than dumpsters, actually, businesses, businesses need to clean up the front of their stores, even if they're not the ones who put the trash there.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to our finance director. Mr. Blum?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. I would like to point out that on Friday, a email went out with the line item budget attached. If you haven't seen it, please look for it. It is 47 pages, I believe, so you probably don't want to print it, but it's available for your review as requested. And I finally got good news from the state of Michigan for a change. Third time was the charm. They did approve our pension deficit plan. The next step now is to, well, comply with it, and it also has to be posted on our website. Other than that, there isn't much to it, other than do what we said we were gonna do. But third time's the charm, so we got it.
We're probably one of the few cities in the state of Michigan that has, have been approved.
Probably one of the few that took three tries. I don't know what their problem was.
Congratulations.
I think it was the $4 million we sent.
It might have swayed them.
Are they gonna want the same thing next year? I hope not. All right, any questions for the finance director?
Yes, I-
I guess I did have a question about the personnel. When do we see the budget for the personnel?
Madam Mayor, I-
Cause that's in your, your little-
Right.
Cage, so when do we see that?
On March 29th, I had sent an email. I will resend it in case some council members may have missed it. I think it was like 125 pages, if anyone remembers. But I will resend it, but it has the detailed breakdown for the personnel.
125 pages.
Correct.
Yeah, I had a, um, a question. I think I addressed it with the city manager about, about having MERS. I don't know why we went to, to MERS all the way in the past, but I was told that if we had our own retirement pension fund in the city at East Point, we would save more money in it, you know, towards that deficit in the future, cause we'd be having our own money and we invest our own money. I want to know, was there any truth to that?
No. But we had it in-house. There were professional investors that were hired. However, their fees, we were paying almost $350,000 a year in investment fees that we currently don't incur with MERS.
How much, what's our investment fee currently with MERS?
Uh, it is running at .28, I believe, is the basis points, where most of the investment managers were at least five basis points plus the overall. Morgan Stanley had another, they were probably 2.5 just on their own on top of all the money managers. So we were incurring significant fees handling it in-house, as well as the administration of the pension and the pension payments. It wa, it was a huge savings to the city by transferring it over to MERS.
Okay, cause I thought having a third party do it for us, we were paying more than-
No.
Investing our own money to have somebody else- than investing our own money to have somebody else do it for us.
They're managing $8 billion in assets, actually, it's probably closer to nine by now. We had our $40 million. They have just savings due to the massive investments that they have.
Their investment rules are a little bit different than what we were able to do as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to our city attorney, Mr. Albert.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This Thursday, beginning at 12:30 here at City Hall, I will be participating in 13 dangerous building hearings. Those hearings are open to the public, so if anybody wants to come down, they're usually conducted in one of the side conference rooms here at City Hall. And again, those begin at 12:30, and they are open to the public. Madam Mayor, this is also the time of the year to schedule the annual city attorney review, and so I'm happy to make myself available for any of the upcoming council meetings.
You want to do it after the next council meeting?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, May 7th.
At May 7th?
Okay, thank you. And that's all I had. Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Anyone have questions? All right, let's move on to new business. Our first item is the appointments to the construction board of appeals. This is a mayor's appointment with a city council approval, and this is a suggestion to Ms. Van Heren for Sam Camilo, who has a business here in East Point on Nine Mile Road. And this would be to be a member of the East Point Construction Board of Appeals with a term to expire on January 1, 2024.
Madam Mayor, I motion to appoint Sam Camilo to the construction board of appeals with a term expiring January 1, 2024.
Support, support. Move and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Our next item under new business is the authorization for a change order, which is unusual, but this is for 2018 sewer rehab by doing a full-length CIPP lining.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve contract modification number one with, in sitiform technologies USA LLC in the amount of $76,378.90 for the 2018 sewer rehabilitation by full-length CIPP lining, AEW project number 0145-0533.
Support.
Move and support it. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
I had a question on this. I know in this proposal, it said that we looked into these and looked into half, paying for half and then paying for a full one, correct? Mrs. Sabata?
When this.
And then when we went in and looked at half, we found out we need to do the full one.
Correct.
So I don't know who did that evaluation because it sounds like we're paying more money because of somebody didn't evaluate it the right way. Is that?
When they, they made an assumption going in, and then when they got in there, they saw it was worse than what they assumed, so they now need to do a little bit more of a repair. But on the bright side, the, I'm going to call it the short-length lining is not going to be done, so the net increase to the entire project is only $7,378.90.
Okay, because I thought they went in and did the short length, send that, okay.
No.
So they didn't do anything on the short length?
No, they stopped.
Okay, good. Okay, yes.
And the sewers were scoped several years ago, so it can be an extension of a previous thing.
Okay, thank you.
So we call the vote?
We're done.
All right, the next item is the approval of the hourly rate changes for the city engineer. Can we have a motion, please? I was a little bit surprised to see how low their rate was because in the, down in the sanitary district and a couple other places, I've been looking at rates, and I thought it was really good, so I was surprised.
The contract says it has to be inflation, and so inflation must have been 2.4 something. That rounds to 2.5.
Sounds right.
Based on the taxable value increase, it's 2.6, so they're actually coming in lower than the inflation rate.
Oh, I thought my assessment said 2.4.
Yours personally may have because of the way the assessments go, but the overall, we were allowed a 2.6% increase this year.
Well, no, it has the inflation rate on the sheet of paper, right, that you get, not just like.
Oh, I think we're talking about two different inflation rates.
You're looking at Headlink.
Engineers is based on the Detroit Metropolitan Area Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerical workers, whereas the state of Michigan was based on the CPI, so different numbers go into the calculations.
All right, can we have a motion, please?
I'm, I motion that the East Point, the city of East Point counts, let me go that, do that over. I motion that the East Point City Council approves the 2019, 2020 hourly rate charges as presented February 18, 2019 by AEW with an effective date of July 1, 2019.
Support. Move and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes. The next item is equipment donation agreement.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I motion that the East Point City Council approves the equipment donation agreement between Michigan Dog Owners Group and the city of East Point as presented and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support.
I do have one question on this. Is rare going to be collecting the fees for the fobs to the dog park?
They still are.
That wasn't my dog before?
No.
No.
No, for a couple of years now.
Okay.
And I think that bench was donated by the East Point Rotary Club, not the Lions Club, but it's in material. All right, we have a motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes. The next item is the agreement for the NCPWO wastewater master plan and the data sharing. I can probably bring you up to date on this. This is one more GIS system that doesn't, isn't compatible with everything else. So we have the choice of either sharing the information, the asset management information that we previously have done by AEW, or they're going to come in and do it for us, and their cost is a little bit higher than what we've previously paid.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the intergovernmental data sharing agreement with the McComb Intercepter Drainage District as presented and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Support. Move and support it. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico.
Yes.
Next item is the adoption of the social media policy. Do we have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm, yes, Madam Mayor, I motion that the East Point City Council adopts the city of East Point social media policy as presented.
Support. Move and support it. Questions, discussion?
Sure, so in general, I think the whole policy was supposed to be about, well, I think the policy should be about our side of it, not the residents and the public commenting. This whole policy is about the public commenting on.
On the cities.
Social media, but I figured we were talking about, well, a policy should include like succession planning on our side so we have multiple people on accounts or city email addresses, or at least depending on how the social media works, certain people are, have access, things like that, and certain people are posting and things like that. None of that's in here. I think a few of these things are pretty much unenforceable also, like requesting that people use their full name to comment on things. I don't know who would check that, first of all, or try to enforce it, but that was my thoughts.
I think two policies were probably good for the public administrative part of it. So, you know, two ways, and I know, understand what you're saying, because I know a lot of people even celebrities or whatever you want to say have pages where you cannot comment. They just put out information. And so I don't know if that's more of a job for you, for the department, to try to answer people questions all the time, or just put out, oh, we're starting the neighborhood watch, or this is, you know, just to be an informative page, other than always trying to check what people comment, if somebody's saying something offensive or not like that, would that be too much on a department to always try to monitor what people say, or just have a page where you're just being more informative than trying to babysit what people say on a page?
We're pretty good about that. We have four administrators in the police department, and if there's any type of rude comments or inappropriate comments, we will hide the comment, and then sometimes it's to the point where we have to ban the person from using our page. But for the most part, we like to engage a little bit with the, with the residents, and they asked a lot of questions, and so far, we're able to manage that, and actually, all of us enjoy doing it and working with the residents that way. I don't see an issue with that.
From a little historical perspective, this is actually, I don't want to say word for word, because we made a few modifications, as our neighbor in Sinclair Shores has for their policy, it was actually drafted by our law firm, so we didn't have to go too far to come up with something.
Any other comments?
I did want to say, I'm not entirely sure that the appeal process section is necessary. I would like to remove that personally.
So if someone's banned, they're banned from a.
Well, I, it seems, I think it's a little onus to put in the, a three-member board, and I just don't think it's necessary. And the other thing I wanted to change was the ability to change this policy at the top of that same page has city council and/or the city manager, and I'd rather edit that so that changes would be approved by council.
Does everybody agree to that?
Oh, I just noticed something. The Sinclair Shores actually has a communications commission that serves as the appellate body, and I missed one reference to the communications commission. So where it says the communications commission will review any decisions made by the city manager, that statement, that phrase should reference the appellate board defined by this policy.
If we have one.
If we have one. Right at, next, right next sentence.
Oh.
Since we don't have a communications commission. And you're recommending that we abolish the appeal process, then that second sentence.
I think you just removed that whole.
Then that whole section would go if the appeal process goes.
That second sentence, is that what you want, Mr. Kleinfeld?
It's fine with me.
And then the appeal process. All right, any other changes that you'd like to see?
Madam Mayor, we, so we are striking, we're just including the first sentence on the top of page two and deleting the second sentence.
Second sentence, but in the first sentence, we would just say comprised of the city council and delete the city manager.
And I think, Mr. D'Amico, if he wants to see another type of policy, I don't have any objection to that, but I do think it's important to pass something tonight because I just have a concern about removing or blocking any users without having a neutral policy in place. So I think it's important, for our purposes, to have a policy.
To have this one done tonight, and then if you had additional recommendations for changes, then bring them forward at another council meeting.
Well, so, I mean, how, I guess most of this, I think, like our list of things, I'm just trying to think in practical terms what this is going to mean, because most of these things that we list are probably going to be taken down by Facebook also. You know, if you post nudity or pornography, they'd probably take it down, or, you know, it'd be flagged and have taken down pretty quickly, probably. A lot of these things, you know. And then, so, a lot of this, like I said, I don't know how we're going to enforce that people are using their legal name, or, I'm just surprised to hear also that we have banned people from the page. I did not know that. Guess if we could get, you know, could write something up real quick to let us know what has happened in the past and why people have been banned, that'd be good to know. But I think a lot, I mean, pretty much, most of this is unenforceable. I think people are just going to post what they, they post, so if someone breaks this, we're just going to ban them from that particular page, or, like, what does this mean in practical terms?
When I read it, I thought it was just giving clarification on why the city would have a right to go delete a post. So if they do one of those things, just saying, well, they violated this, so that's why we removed your post, if they come back and be like, why'd you remove my post?
Mm-hmm.
Because now we can say, well, you violated our ordinance on our social media place. That's how I read it. That's how I took it.
Was that the intent?
That was the intent.
So I would agree with it.
I don't think like the hardcore enforcing, like the legal name thing, I don't think the city's going to be spending time looking to make sure everyone's using their legal name, but if someone has an inappropriate username, then maybe that might set a flag to look into that.
Yes, I will say, a few things have gotten past the filters. So we had to be a little bit, I think we were a little creative in describing some of the examples I don't think Sinclair Shores actually had in theirs because of some things that we have already discovered, how they get past the Facebook filters.
I'm happy with deleting all of that language related to the name, because if there's no violation of any other portion of the policy, it doesn't matter if there's.
Where are you?
The middle of. The middle of the paragraph under criteria for posting information, I would delete from users are prohibited all the way to the sentence ending in organization or club name.
Okay.
I just want to be careful with people's First Amendment right, too, just so we're not, you know, picking things that aren't.
Except this, except this is social media that belongs to the city.
Right, but if I'm not mistaken, there's a lawsuit with the president about his Twitter that he can't block people on his Twitter, so I'm not sure, you know, if that's ever been ruled on, but I just don't, I think it's an unnecessary.
I mean, yeah, for me, it's not even about blocking, it's just having the right to be able to remove the post or hide it.
All right, with those three changes then, would you like to move to approve this policy?
We actually have a motion and support on the floor, Mayor.
All right, and yeah, other changes.
Guess we have to recognize the amendments.
So then, then later, should I, I'll send in ideas about the policy for our side?
Correct. Yeah.
So we need a motion with the changes added.
Yeah, Ms. Owens made the motion, didn't she?
Yes, she did.
Yes.
And Councilmember Lucido supported.
Yeah, I motion that the East Point City Council adopt the city of East Point social media policy as presented with the amendments of taking away the appeal process, that whole paragraph, also taking away the city manager. As far as the city council and city manager reserves the right to amend, we're just going to leave it as city council and take away the city manager part. And under the criteria for posting information on the city of East Point Facebook page, on the part that says users are prohibited from posting under a false username or handle that is not the user's legal name.
is not the user's legal name, we're going to get rid of that as well and delete that with these changes.
And the one other, that other sentence on page two.
The next sentence as well.
In the next, okay, in the next sentence as well, as far as individuals may post under a username that includes a nickname, provided the user's last name is also included in the username. So with these changes.
And then that sentence, businesses, starting with businesses and then ending with club name, too, I believe Mike made that change.
With addition to businesses, organizations, and clubs may post under their business, organization, or club name.
Is that it?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Move to support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico.
No.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Well, our item G is the one-time waiver of the late fee for dog licenses. Chief Rehob, do you want to explain what you'd like that change made, please?
Well, the Pit Bull group is going to provide free chipping, you know, for residents of East Point. And the goal of this whole thing is to get as many residents as possible to come there to chip their animals, whether it's a dog or their cat. And also, we would like them to license their animals while they're there. And sometimes, if there's, if we, in this case, if we waive a fee such as a late dog license, it's only $10, that would, we feel that would draw more people in. And that's the goal, to get as many people as we can there. And it's only a $10 fee, it would only be a one-time fee. I mean, that would be up to the council if you want to do something in the future. But again, it's a one-time thing. I think this is going to attract a lot of residents. I hope we have good weather. But again, we just want to attract as many people as we can, and we feel that if you waive the fee, that would bring in more people.
So do we have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I motion that the city of East Point City Council waives a $10 late fee for dog licenses obtained from the city of East Point during the pet microchipping event on May 5, 2019.
Support.
Move and support it. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
So we're going to get a lot of publicity out there as well for this event. I know there's already some, but...
Yes, we're going to keep posting it. We're getting a lot of phone calls and people are responding on our Facebook page.
Great. All right. And our next item, our last item, is the authorization to hire additional police officers. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I motion to table this matter until after we approve our budget.
Support.
Move and support it. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
No.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes.
Next item is payroll and bills.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the bills in the amount of $3,658,672.81.
Support.
Move and support it. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes.
Councilmember D'Monico.
Yes.
Move to the second hearing of the public. Does anyone wish to be heard at this time? Ms. Democurio?
I'm Peggy Democurio from the East Point Community Garden. We are about to start our eighth season over on Nine Mile Cross from the fire department. We are hoping to really engage the public this year and get a lot of volunteers to come out and to also serve the community by providing vegetables and fruit to others in the community. We have been going for seven seasons, this will be our eighth. And in that time, we've raised thousands of pounds of vegetables, and we donate them around the city to our senior residences and church food banks. It's very hard for us to do it with the small group that we have, and so we are hoping to really expand our reach and get more people involved in the community garden. And we thank people that have already donated their time to help us out. As a part of the community, we are also responsible for paying water bills, and we know that that is a subject in the city, that water is an important part of the garden, and it is something that we pay for. And so we are looking for some sponsors this year also that would be willing to help us out by sponsoring some beds that will go to raising food for the community, and that will help us to cover our expenses as well and help us keep going and growing.
Thank you. And Lori in the background? Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard? Please?
Good evening. I'm Jessie with Danaskis Consulting.
You may need to reach there.
Can you hear me okay now?
And your name again?
Jessie with Danaskis Consulting and Development. I am here to let you guys know that we are still available to assist in the drafting of the ordinance for the MMFLA and your recreational ordinance as well. If you need any help with that, we are available. We have assisted other municipalities in doing so. So if you guys have any questions, the planning commission is also welcome to contact us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
Here in Royage and East Point resident, so a couple of things real quick. Once again, since we're getting close to Easter, yet another reminder for people not to purchase bunnies, chicks, or ducks. Most people do this out of impulse and lack of education. These animals require extensive care, and they are not to be treated like trash, that you just throw them out when you're tired of the animals. You certainly put yourself at risk in facing charges of abandonment under the Michigan anti-cruelty statute and being caught abandoning animals. Moving on, the petting zoo issue. I'm just stunned that you still have failed to take any action in banning these petting zoos. I've fully informed you in the risk to the public in regards to the transmission of zoonatic diseases and also all the animal neglect that occurs. And you just let it go in one ear and out the other. This is both an animal welfare issue and a public safety issue. On the agenda, under new business, where you just dealt with the social media policy, I have something to add to that. You know, the first thing that comes to mind is whistleblowers. People have the right to blow the whistle, and most people who blow the whistle do so anonymously. And if you don't like what is being said, well, remember what I told you a few meetings back. Citizens have the right to address their government without fear of reprisal or retaliation. I think it's really foolish what you did. And last of all, at the last meeting, Harvey was called out on his hat. Now, I do not agree with the pin that was on his hat. I don't agree with it. I don't support it. However, I really feel like this body needs to do something about your planning commission member who keeps showing up with a T-shirt, build the wall and crime will fall. That is embracing a xenophobic attitude and a racist attitude. And this is someone who is a public official on the planning commission in that capacity presenting to you. This isn't on his own time. He's acting as a public official, and you need to do something about that. This is not a racist city. It's not a xenophobic city either. Do something.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard at this time? Anyone else? Second hearing of the public is closed. Move on to mayor and council reports. Let's start with Mr. D'Monico.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. April is a busy month for Beautification Commission. They hold most of their events in April. We've got two down, one to go. The Adopt a Flower Bed kickoff was a couple weeks ago, very successful, up on 10 Mile to Parks building. And then this past weekend, we had the eat-up and clean, oh, I reversed it here, the cleanup and eat-up. You got a cleanup litter, then you get some food. We had 36 volunteers. Mayor Protem Kleinfeld and Councilmember Lucido, Attorney Albright here, were all there. We had, there's some members in the audience that were there also. We had 36 volunteers out and had 50 bags of garbage we picked up. There is still more to get, so hopefully we can maybe set something, another one up. Many hot dogs and hamburgers were eaten. Have to thank Andy Boyer on the commission for that. And I think, Sarah, did you bring some food, too, or no?
Yeah, I brought a salad.
Yep. So thank you for bringing food. And Lynn Salafia brought some things, and Craig Wodecki. So I'd like to just thank everybody, the rest of the commission, for that one very successfully. And then the third and final event of the month for beautifications, a memorial tree ceremony at 11:00 a.m. on the 27th. So if you're around, come up to that. And I hope everyone filed their taxes by yesterday. And happy birthday to my nana. We went out to Spag Burger yesterday for her birthday, so that was nice. It was my first time going there. Very good burgers. Highly recommend. And everyone, I know you're all looking forward to our budget sessions. Come on out for those, April 30th and May 1st. We set those up for 6:00 p.m., right? I believe. Come out at 6:00 p.m. for those. And that was, that's all I had, Madam Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Owens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad everybody came out tonight. Urban Seed, you will see me and my 4-H group helping you in the garden this year. So look for us in our green shirts, too. Also, and thank you for what you do in the community, everybody that's here. You know, just sending a shout-out to Urban Seed, because 70 years and being dedicated to something says a lot that you really care about the community. So thank you for doing that. Also, as you guys know, I'm on the library commission. We have had our meeting today, and so we had raised with the bottles and things like that up to $1,500. So we just need to raise $2,000 more, and we will have those computers for the kids. So we also are collecting bottles and also change and money and things like that at the library to get to that $2,000. I'm so glad that, you know, the friends have partnered up with the library, so we're able to do so many things in the community. And we're also having a puzzle contest, so it's going to be like groups of four. You have friends and family members, or, you know, your neighbors in groups of four. And it's a 100-piece puzzle, 100, 200-piece puzzle. Whoever gets the most wins. So, and I told them that might break up families, because if, you know, if my husband don't get it right, we, I don't know, I might not like him after that. So, but it's something fun. It's something different, a puzzle piece group that, I think that was really cute. We have a really good staff with the library. Bring so many different events and ideas. I really like, you know, and the book sale is also coming up. So stay tuned to a lot of things that's in the library. They're really doing a lot of different things. And this Thursday, I have my monthly meetup at Koology. It's right on Nine Mile Road. I had it last month, and the deputy safety director was there, and we had a really good time. And Von Thai, the restaurant, had donated some food for the residents. It was really good. And this Thursday, we will hopefully, I'm going to put him on the spot, the fire chief there, to give us some direction on those smoke detectors, to get people, get on the list to get in their new smoke detectors. I always try to have someone in the community, even Urban Seed, if you want to come out there, I invite, you know, people that are really big in the community to come out and promote what you're doing, so the residents can know. A lot of residents move to the city and don't know what's available to them, and they really want to help out. We have a lot of seniors and retired people that want something to do. They want to give back, and sometimes they don't know how to do that. So anybody that's doing something in the city that's positive, we try not to do anything political. So I try to keep it, you know, my platform just positive. You know, you have to do that on your own terms. So if you want to come and, you know, talk about what's going on in the city, please do that. Also, Koology this Saturday for the Arts Commission, they will have a lady that is a resident in East Point. I haven't met her yet, but she is a, she does film, and she will be having a small film fest there at Koology this Saturday. So when they told me about it, and the lady found out, you guys, you know, started this whole thing, it was like Detroit doesn't even have this. Some of the major cities don't have a arts commission. So she thought it was amazing. So I want to invite the Arts Commission and also the residents to this film fest that they're having. And certainly with you guys' ideas and her ideas, you guys can grow. And so maybe that could be the next stage with the Arts Commission and do a film fest in East Point, something new. So with that being said, thanks again for everybody coming out. Have a good weekend and be safe.
Ms. Lucido.
First, I'd like to take a moment to thank all the volunteers that came out on Saturday. It was a really impressive event, and every single year, it grows a little bit more, and we pick up a little bit more trash. So I do want to thank everyone that came out to participate in the cleanup and eat-up. Another thing, I wanted to let all the residents know that the police department is going to be starting neighborhood watch programs. They're hoping by the end of the month, the beginning of May, to have a kickoff to start that. So make sure you check their Facebook page, because they've been keeping the information posted on there. Also, as we discussed earlier, May 5th, the police department is joining Detroit Pit Crew to offer free microchipping. It's going to be available in the city hall parking lot. You do have to show proof that your animal has their up-to-date rabies vaccine. And that's all I have this evening.
Mr. Kleinfeld.
I just want to say thanks to everyone who came out for the beautification cleanup, and give a special props to Rich. He got carried away, so he showed up late to eat, and he had absconded with Sarah's son. So, because they were just so determined to pick up trash. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. So I am the one person that wasn't there on Saturday. I can now stand for 10 minutes on my left foot, so I'm progressing. But that would be impossible for me to walk and pick up trash for very long. But instead, I worked on the cruise. So the cruise is coming along, and the car shows are happening, and I think it's going to be a great event this year. So we do need to get the council to have their picture taken together like we have in the past. So if you would just give me some dates when you're available, and we can meet at Genesis, and we can find the biggest, best Corvette and get our picture taken again. And I'm going to ride in the driver's seat, Mike. Community Garden, I'm so glad to see both of you here tonight, because I know how valuable the community garden has been. And the tomatoes and peppers and zucchini and all are the major source of so many of our senior citizens during the summer months. And it's a great time. This group is a really fun group of people, and it's been, made some journeys and made a lot of positive changes. And I think it's a great group. So I hope we get some people to come out. Spag Burger, oh my gosh. I ended up in there the other day, let me tell you. I don't usually like hamburgers, but the pictures posted all over Facebook, and I'm telling you, that is one of the best burgers I've had. And fries, it was just an outstanding place. And I'm so glad, because I think it's an example of a business, that's a family-owned business, that's been in our city for 50 years. And I think they're doing an outstanding job. But we have a lot of other new businesses also. The Thai Place is a great place. We have Five O's. And some of our businesses along Ten Mile Road are so packed, you can't even get in. If you go to Donna's now, you have to have a reservation for lunch. So I think our businesses are really doing well. I'm very excited. We're meeting tomorrow with Genesis, so that we can follow through with all the changes that they've made to their new service garage on the one side, and they're looking to expand their business. Their business has been outstanding and is really moving along. So all of a sudden, we've got a tremendous momentum in the city of East Point, and I'm glad to see it happening. Lions on Thursday night is the McComers coming. It's a great event. It's a white king kickoff, and it's only $20, and that's a meal at the East Point Manor, as well as some entertainment with the McComers, who are college students that are very active in dance and music. And it's a great event, and the money goes for assisting people with sensory deprivation. So great event with the Lions with that. sensory deprivation, so, great event with the Lions with that, and Memorial Day Parade. Sarah and I were at a meeting last night for the parade committee, I think it's coming along great, the Knights of Columbus, the Odd Fellows, the, who else, Sarah? The Sea Cadets.
Military Museum.
Military Museum, so it's really coming along, and there are a number of things that are posted in various places, there are posters where, if you want to participate in the parade, you just have to call either through the Military Museum or one of the Knights of Columbus, and the big event, of course, is on Memorial Day, which is May 27th, and starts with a pancake breakfast over at Odd Fellows, and the parade lineup at 10:30, parade starts at 11:00, and we have a community picnic afterwards, so, lots of fun. And with that, that's all I have for tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation with the DOJ.
Support.
Move and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember DiMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Pixley.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Go into closed session, we'll be there...